The Honorable Justices of the Supreme Court of the State of Iowa. Hear ye, hear ye, the Honorable Supreme Court of the State of Iowa is now in session.
This morning, we have three cases for submission. Ames 2304 LLC versus City of Ames, Gregory Hawkins versus Grinnell Regional Medical Center, and a non-oral Iowa Supreme Court Attorney Discipline Board versus Johnson, which will be deemed submitted. Justice Katie is not able to be with us today, but he will participate in the case and review the tape. So we're ready for the argument in Ames 2304. And Mr. Uptograph?
May it please the Court, opposing counsel. My name is Eric Uptograph. I represent the City of Ames Zoning Board of Adjustment, and I am here on this application for further review from the Iowa Court of Appeals decision from October of this year. We filed this particular appeal because we believe that it is a matter of broad public importance when it comes to the 99 counties that have boards of adjustments and hundreds of cities in Iowa that do. The issue that we have presented for you and for your consideration is a preservation of error issue. And to talk about that preservation of error issue, we kind of have to start with what is a zoning board of adjustment? And really, what a zoning board of adjustment is, is a group of local individuals who volunteered their time to consider zoning ordinances and essentially adjusting those zoning ordinances on a case-by-case basis when it comes to the general rules that are applied in those ordinances. What has occurred in this particular case is that we had an application from Ames 2304 to essentially remodel a house, which is an existing non-conforming use. That existing non-conforming use was essentially having a four-unit apartment building in a single-family zoning residence. In that particular circumstance, the unit as it existed before the application had four units and four bedrooms. The application was for remodeling, and in that remodeling, they asked to increase the number of bedrooms to seven. And in this particular circumstance, that then brought into play the Ames zoning code that deals with non-conforming uses. If you have an existing non-conforming use in Ames, it is grandfathered in.
Does four, does seven bedrooms automatically mean there's going to be more people there?
I don't believe that it automatically means that, no. No. But the real question is, is this, is did the Board of Adjustments' decision, is it one of many possible reasonable interpretations here? Because what the Board of Adjustment does is it takes what I would call generally written ordinances and applies them on a case-by-case basis to the circumstances presented to them.
Under the present setup, why couldn't someone be sleeping on a sofa bed in the living room of these other houses? And now you have eight sleeping rooms for these four units.
It's entirely possible, yes. I mean, it's entirely possible that you could interpret the statute that way. But the question is, and what this court said in Bontrager back in 2008, is that it is not the job of the District Court or the Court of Appeals to substitute its judgment in these cases for that of the Board of Adjustment.
But would you agree with me that the ordinance at issue is ambiguous?
Yes, but I don't believe that an ordinance being ambiguous is fatal to this particular case. Because that's how zoning ordinances are written. Because in this particular case, the issue is this: You have a zoning ordinance that covers non-conforming uses for any structure and any use. It is virtually impossible to define all the non-conforming uses in this circumstance. The criticism that the Court of Appeals had about the term "increase in intensity" is that the word "intensity" is not properly defined or specifically defined when it comes to whether or not it applies to bedrooms or whether or not it applies to units. So the Court of Appeals then went and said, "Well, the word 'intensity' was used in the context of apartment buildings elsewhere, so that's the definition we're going to use." I believe that's an error. To be specific, the words "increase in intensity" when it applies to a non-conforming use is context-specific. That's what the definitions say in this zoning ordinance. They say "intensity" means "commercial," but all words are to be interpreted in the context they're used. Because the zoning board of adjustment is its own unique creature under Iowa law. It is not-
What does "intensity" mean in this context? What would your definition of "intensity" be?
In my opinion, it's very much this, that a reasonable person could say, "My non-conforming use is that I have an apartment building in a single-family residence zone." Why is that a non-conforming use? It's a non-conforming use because I'm likely to have more occupants because I have an apartment building in that area. And those occupants are a burden on all of the neighbors.
But why does occupants equal intensity?
Because they have cars. Because they park on the street. Because they use services.
But you can regulate the parking by limiting parking on the street. You have all kinds of ways to take care of the parking without stopping someone from using their building.
Well, I guess I would disagree that we're stopping them from using their building. What we're doing is saying you can't make your non-conforming use more burdensome on the neighbors. That's why the word "intensity" is inclined there. Because frankly, if they had 12 bedrooms, they're more likely to have 12 occupants. Does it automatically mean that? No, you're very correct in saying it does not automatically mean that. But the question is, is it reasonable for the Board of Adjustment to conclude that it's more likely to create an intensity, an increase in intensity use to have more bedrooms?
Isn't the question of what intensity means a question of law?
I think it's a mixed question of law and fact. That's why I've been talking about the context that comes in here. That's where the Board of Adjustment is different than other circumstances. When I look at the words "increase in intensity" in this statute, I think of them more in the context of the reasonable person standard in a negligence case. Well, a reasonable person standard depends on what the context of each situation is. And a non-conforming use discussion has to be that way. Because if you try and name all the non-conforming uses that you can think of, it's like naming the stars in the sky.
Well, the Court of Appeals' approach struck me as plainly just a straight question of law. Do you disagree?
That's how the Court of Appeals treated it, and I believe that's part of the error here in not using the preservation of error doctrine correctly. Because the idea is that when you have your zoning ordinances, they have to be written in this broad and general way that requires statutory interpretation.
Sure, they challenged the meaning of the term "intensity."
They presented this theory. They presented the theory that the word "intensity" does not apply to this remodeling project because it did not enlarge the building. That's the argument that was made before the Board of Adjustment. Then the second argument that was made in front of the Board of Adjustment was, "This does not increase the intensity," because intensity does apply to this place. The alternative argument was, "It does not apply to this building because we are not increasing the maximum occupancy." The argument that Seth Dodge made when he was the attorney in this case was, "There are four units. Every unit could have three unrelated families, so we have a maximum occupancy of 12." Which goes to Justice Wiggins's question is, "Does more four bedrooms or more bedrooms automatically mean more occupants?" And the answer is, "Not automatically." But the question is this: Is it reasonable for the Board of Adjustment to reach that conclusion that extra bedrooms would lead to extra occupants?
Isn't that what some of the witnesses at the hearing testified?
Absolutely. And I think it's a very logical and reasonable inference. Because Ames 2304 clearly wants to add more bedrooms to these apartments so they can rent them out as two-bedroom apartments instead of single-bedroom apartments. And this is in campus town of Ames. I mean, what is going to happen is they're going to rent this building out to people who want to be roommates with their friends from college as they move out of the dorms. And those people, as people do in college, will end up finding a boyfriend or girlfriend who will move into their bedrooms.
How much does the, how much parking is available in that lot? There's some gravel lot, and it seemed to be disputed how many parking spaces there were. I read anywhere from four to on up to eight or something like that.
There's a dispute about that, between whether or not it's four or eight. Because they have a gravel parking space there. And what the zoning board of adjustment did was take the recommendation of its zoning administrator, that said, "We consider a parking space to be so many feet wide," and I can't recall what it is off the top of my head, and say, "You can't fit more than four cars here," or whatnot. Because the issue is, is that in campus town, you're going to end up with, if you have 12 occupants in that building, you're going to end up with cars on the street. And then you're going to have your cars parked in front of all the neighbors' houses. You're going to block off their mailboxes. You're going to cause issues on, I mean, game day. You're going to cause all sorts of problems that come with having that circumstance. And so the question-
Yeah, but anybody could park off-street. I mean, off-premises on the street unless you have no parking there. Why should that be a concern? You have the parking available, and people should just be able to park there. And if you don't want them to park there, then put signs up, "No overnight parking," or "No parking from this to this."
Sure, there are always other ways to deal with this. But from the zoning board of adjustment circumstance, their job is to try and predict the future. I mean, that's the difficulty that you're pointing out, and I think you're very astute to do so, is the concept of, "What is the likely occurrence if this happens in the future? What is likely to happen if you allow there to be seven bedrooms here instead of four?" And they reached the, I think, reasonable conclusion, as much as you can read the tea leaves, that that means that you're going to have, I believe the zoning administrator tells them that they presume one and a half occupants per bedroom. The idea being is if you have seven, that you're likely to have two people sleeping in one bedroom and one sleeping in the other, and you're going to have an extra, if you have seven, then you're going to have, you know, a due to math-
Did the Court of Appeals decide an issue that wasn't properly preserved?
I believe so, yes. I mean, the Court of Appeals' opinion takes the position that as long as you questioned what intensity meant, then it was fair game for you to present a completely new theory on appeal. And then the Court of Appeals adopted an even different theory than Ms. Hula in Ames 2304 presented to them.
Has your factual presentation have been different if you knew of the second theory?
I think that there would have been a different discussion and exercise of judgment. Because really-
More to the facts. Clearly, I mean, I think our case law stands for the proposition that if you, on appeal, introduce a new issue for which a party was deprived of the opportunity to make a factual presentation.
Sure.
I mean, that's the high-water mark, I think, of issue preservation. And then it kind of, frankly, bleeds off, and the color gets less strong. And when we have, for example, our cases say, "Well, if you cite the wrong code provision,"
Sure.
Or you cite no code provision at all, but we can kind of figure out what it is. That's on this end of the spectrum. And I'm trying to figure out where on the spectrum yours is.
We're in the middle. And the reason we're in the middle is this, is that what the Indinio case from Vermont that we cited in our brief talks about is that you have to present these issues to the Board because they have specialized knowledge. Now, I know that's a, in a case of a board of adjustment, we were talking about laypeople, volunteers, you're saying, "Well, what's really their specialized knowledge?" And their specialized knowledge is very much their experts of the locality. They live there. They drive down those streets. They know how this affects the community. And so when you present a theory, a mixed question of law and fact, like, "Does it increase intensity for you to have more bedrooms?" That's a mixed question of law and fact. Because you're both looking at the law, and you're both looking at that circum, and you're looking at the facts and making predictions about the future. And that's what's difficult for a board of adjustment, and that's why we think you have to have an error preservation standard that goes there, goes to that issue. Because this isn't the only board of adjustment I represent. This, your error preservation standard is tight for board of adjustments because it is a unique creature. It isn't a jury. It isn't a judge. It isn't even really an administrative agency. But we write the rules for board of adjustments by borrowing from all of those circumstances. And that's what you're hitting on with your question, is, you know, if this were a jury trial or a judge trial, then I want to know what facts would be different. But this is a quasi-judicial board. And what that means is, is that it's like Hercules. It's half-man, it's half-God. And part of what it's doing is judging facts, and part of what it's doing is making policy for the locality. And when you take, and when you don't have a tight issue preservation standard for that circumstance, you essentially make the Court of Appeals the board of adjustment. You let the Court of Appeals decide on a case-by-case basis whether or not people should use these things.
Couldn't the city just rewrite the ordinance and make it, add a definition of intensity for this specific context?
They could, but the issue would then be that they would have to define intensity for every context. I mean, because then the next person who has a bacon shop will talk to us about, "How is it, what does it matter if I add another grill? Does that necessarily mean that I'm making more bacon?" I mean, that's the issue, that's what I talk about, what I'm saying, naming all the stars in the sky, is that you have to write these in kind of a general circumstance.
But Ames is not like every other town. You've called it campus town yourself. Increase in bedrooms seems like a no-brainer that that's going to be asked about quite frequently. Wouldn't it be simple to write the ordinance to include that as an example?
It would be certainly possible to include examples, yes. I mean, that's why when you ask me the question, "Is this ordinance ambiguous?", my answer has to be yes, because it requires statutory interpretation. But lots of laws require statutory interpretation, and that does not mean that they are unenforceable. I mean, it's really a matter of whether or not a reasonable person could look at this circumstance and say, "Well, using the statutory interpretation, would extra bedrooms, which I intend to fill with extra occupants, mean that I'm increasing the intensity of this non-conforming use?" And frankly, anybody who's trying to settle, or excuse me, anybody who's trying to rent out, you know, two-bedroom apartments instead of one-bedroom apartments knows that their purpose is to increase the number of occupants so they can increase the number of, the amount of rent they collect. This is not a circumstance where a reasonable person wouldn't know what the law means. It isn't a circumstance where the reasonable person would be confused about. I see that my time is up. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Uptograph. Ms. Hula?
May it please the Court, opposing counsel. My name is Deborah Hula. I represent the appellant, Ames 2304 LLC. Without question, Ames 2304 preserved error on the legal and factual issues that the raised in this appeal, that the proposed remodeling would not result in an increase in intensity of the non-conforming use. The ordinance language at issue, the primary language at dispute states, "A non-conforming use may not be increased in intensity." If you look at the District Court record, the District Court acknowledged that this was a statutory interpretation issue raised before the District Court. The District Court described it as an argument that was a mixed question of statutory interpretation and a substantial evidence challenge. And the District Court talked about interpreting the phrase "increase in intensity." The Board also argued before the District Court that the District Court needed to interpret the phrase "increase in intensity" and characterized it as a mixed question of statutory interpretation.
I think everyone agrees, and Judge Doyle and the Court of Appeals made a footnote about this ordinance in particular, and it's pretty much universally considered to be ambiguous. I'd like to jump to an issue with your position as well. Let's talk about that issue that kind of got snuck in on appeal. Would you address that, please?
The interpretation of the term, the definition of the term "intensity" is relevant because there was a statutory interpretation issue raised before the District Court and before the Board about what increase in intensity means. And what Ames 2304 argued on appeal is that there is a specific definition of the term "intensity" in the statute that is a relevant consideration for any court that is interpreting the ordinance. That issue was preserved.
Wait, that's actually not the argument you made. What you argued was, "This definition only talks about commercial use, and because this is a residential use, there is no definition of intensity, so de facto, you win," right? Isn't that the argument you made on appeal?
That is one of the arguments we made, yes.
And then the Court of Appeals didn't buy that, but then adopted a different theory of intensity, right?
That is correct, yes. The Court of Appeals looked at a definition or a reference to intensity in the same non-conforming use chapter.
Here's my practical question: Isn't the very reason why they're doing the remodeling to increase the intensity and make more money? I mean, this is not, you know, the Taj Mahal or the palace at Versailles they're remodeling. This is a building that they ran out to students to make money. And so isn't the whole purpose of this to make it possible for more students to reasonably occupy their building? Isn't that right?
No, it is not. In fact, the evidence before the Board and the evidence consistently below is that the increase in bedrooms would not result in an increase in the number of occupants. The maximum number of occupants under the ordinance at the time was based on the number of apartment units, not the number of bedrooms. And the maximum number of occupants as a four-apartment-unit building is 12. And under the remodeling, the maximum number of occupants would continue to be 12 because it was based on the number of apartment units and not-
But 12 is non-relatives or non-family members. What happens if a married couple moves in with a teenage kiddo as a car? And there might be two or three cars in that situation. And that, or, you know, that's not prohibited.
And that wasn't prohibited before, I mean, that wouldn't be prohibited before the remodeling as well. The remodeling wouldn't impact that. The, I mean, the occupancy wasn't the alternative.
Will legislature change that law where you cannot limit the number of non-related people?
Yes, that is changed over the course of this dispute. When it was in the District Court, it was still one family or three unrelated persons. I believe the ordinance, and this happened after the appeal reached the appellate level. I believe the city has amended the ordinance to refer to three adults, but I, that's not in the record, and I can't, I can't say with certainty. But the occupancy would be the same.
I want to get back to that question I asked you about the issue that you brought up on appeal. And would you agree that the Board of Zoning, the zoning board did not have an opportunity to address your argument that this intensity only applies to commercial property?
They did not have an opportunity to address the definition of intensity that is contained in the zoning ordinance that they are duty-bound to apply.
Because it wasn't brought up, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Also, an old adage, "I may have been born at night, but not last night." When you say four bedrooms, increase to seven doesn't mean more occupants. Do you really believe that, in a town like campus town Ames, that increasing bedrooms isn't going to naturally mean more people?
Yes, because that's what the ordinance states, and my client is subject to not only the zoning ordinances, but also rental ordinance regulations.
But the witnesses at the hearing testified that they anticipated more people ending up occupying this building, right? Didn't they?
They did say that. They were area residents, and they were not making their arguments based on the text of the ordinance. They were saying they thought that it was going to have more people. But they didn't have any fact-based evidence about it. They were speculating.
I mean, you know, my spouse and I, we have, they're mostly grown, but we have three children. When we were looking for a house, we looked for a four-bedroom house. We didn't look for a three-bedroom house, but we could have fit into a three-bedroom or a two-bedroom house. I mean, it all goes to what's likely, doesn't it? Not necessarily what's the maximum occupancy.
Well, one, another way to look at it, if you're going to look at the practicalities of the situation rather than the ordinance, what was, what the remodeling would do, it would change two one-bedroom units to studio or efficiency units. So if you're looking again at the practical effect of it, there's probably going to be fewer people living in the studio than in a one-bedroom apartment. And then one of the one-bedroom apartment buildings would change to a two-bedroom, and one would change to a three-bedroom.
But if we're talking about what the evidence was, what a neighborhood witness has testified to, isn't the Board better positioned to make the call?
Well, in the U.S. Cellular case, this court recognized that generalized neighborhood opposition is probably not enough to establish a factual basis to deny a permit. But going beyond that, what the witnesses in the neighborhood talked about, one point was clear: There were no complaints or concerns about this particular property. One individual who was next door to the property said that in 16 years, he had one noise complaint. The representative of SCAN, which is the Neighborhood Association, testified that the area residents had lived compatively with this particular property.
I have no issue with that testimony, but they're concerned about what life will be like with the additional bedrooms. Could you tell me what the phrase "increase in intensity" could mean when applied to this single-family or this residential neighborhood other than more people, more occupants?
Well, increase in intensity would refer to the use, and the use is four bedroom, four apartment units, and it would stay four apartment units. There are occupancy restrictions. There are also parking, I mean, regulations that would govern the number of parking spaces. And certainly, there are rental regulations that the landlord would be required to comply with as well. From my client's standpoint, there would be no practical impact on the neighborhood. My client strives to comply with the laws that govern it, including occupancy limitations.
But if the issue is, are we counting units or are we counting bedrooms to determine an increase in intensity, isn't the Board, made up of local experts, better positioned than our court to answer that interpretation question?
The Board is still bound by the language of the ordinance. And there, a four-bedroom, you know, under a reasonable interpretation of any ordinance, a four-bedroom, or, sorry, excuse me, a four-apartment-unit building that remains a four-apartment-unit building is not increasing the intensity of use. And in this, this court is, has gone beyond the ordinance text in many cases, addressing whether there was an increase in intensity of a non-conforming use, and has repeatedly recognized that zoning ordinances should be construed strictly, that owners have, property owners have reasonable limitations on their ability to change the use without increasing the intensity of the nonconformity. And in this case, the use currently is a four-apartment-building structure, and it would continue to be a four-apartment-unit structure after the remodeling. And if the question is, "Why is my client trying to do this?", they, my client wanted to upgrade and get a better, better-class of client that would pay more for a more luxurious space.
What is, what is the evidence on charge for each apartment? I know my daughters, when they went to school, they would charge per person rather than renting the whole apartment. What's the evidence here? Are they going to, do they charge per apartment, or do they charge per person, or is there any evidence on it?
There's no evidence in the record about that. In addition, in addition to the legal issue of whether there was an increase in intensity, substantial evidence does not support the Board's conclusion that there was an increase in intensity of the non-conforming use by increasing the number of bedrooms from four to seven. I've talked about the occupancy limitation. Another point that the District Court relied on was a finding that there was a restriction of four total occupants in the entire building. This is not a finding that was presented to the Board or made by the Board. In fact, there's no evidence in the record that the structure was limited to four occupants total. And I want to address parking as well, because the evidence in the record is, does not establish that there would have been an increase in parking. And the District Court had concluded that there was substantial evidence in the record to support denying the permit based on provisions of the parking ordinance and a purported increase in parking needs. No, actually, in fact, under the ordinance, there would be no additional parking required. The evidence about the ordinance is that the parking ordinances had two parts. One was for new construction or a new use, and in this case, there was no new construction or no use. The other portion of the parking ordinance referred to, "Whenever a building used that is lawfully existing is enlarged in floor area, number of employees, number of dwelling units, seating capacity, or otherwise to create a need for an increase of 10% or more in the number of required parking spaces, such spaces shall be provided on the basis of such enlargement or change." And in this case, as we've discussed, there is no actual increase in the maximum occupancy, so there would be no reason to otherwise create a need for an increase in the parking spaces. I know the court earlier asked about what the evidence in the record is about the number of parking spaces. And actually, the evidence is, there is no conclusive evidence in the record. The zoning enforcement officer initially denying the permit informed Ames 2304 that they may want to think about for future reference what might happen under the parking space ordinance. At the hearing before the Board, the Board members asked the zoning enforcement officer about parking, and the zoning enforcement officer explained that, at the time, the Board is only deciding whether or not they will allow the applicant to increase the number of bedrooms as a non-conforming use. And she actually said that she wasn't sure what was allowed in terms of parking under the current configuration. And she wasn't sure about what past approvals may have been made. So I believe one resident may have testified that she thought, looking from the street, driving by, that there were four spaces. My client said that there were eight spaces. But the zoning enforcement- But the zoning enforcement officer didn't acknowledge, she didn't go back and look at city records to make a definitive statement about what would be required under the parking ordinance. So there's really no evidence to conclude that the parking would result in an increase in intensity, particularly given the ordinance text and the fact that the occupancy would remain the same. And the other situation to keep in mind is that parking was an accessory use and not the primary use. And the primary nonconforming use here is the four-apartment-unit structure. To conclude, the record contains no evidence that the remodeling plan would result in an increase in intensity of the nonconforming use, and therefore, we respectfully request that the court reverse the judgment of the district court and direct the board to issue the permit and authorize Ames 2304 to complete the interior remodeling plan.
Before I sit down, if you don't mind, I have one further question related to the Bontrager case. And it's an interesting case, I think, but it does address preservation of error. And I'm just going to read parts of it and then get your response. "A review in court will not entertain a new theory or a different claim." Well, this isn't a different claim, but arguably, it's a new theory. And then it goes on to say that it won't decide an issue that's not raised. What's your approach to issue preservation in light of the language in Bontrager that it will not entertain a new theory? I understand, again, this isn't a really different claim, but it's arguably a new theory.
Again, it was presented, both parties argued before the district court, and the district court decided and issued a statutory interpretation regarding the phrase "increase in intensity." What we are arguing is that the specific statutory definition of the term "intensity" is relevant to interpreting that phrase. Even if that specific definition is overlooked, a common sense interpretation of increase in intensity shows there's no increase in intensity here.
Well, just a slight change in argument, is that what you're saying?
It's identifying a specific definition that's relevant to the statutory interpretation Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hewlett. Is there any rebuttal, Mr. Updike?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Again, may it please the court, opposing counsel. I'd love to answer your question. And the answer is, is this, is that if the, if you follow what Bontrager is really talking about, is it's the closest that this court has ever gotten to finally distilling what a board of adjustment is. If you read Bontrager very carefully, it has to deal with the fact that there was a split previously in the standards of reviewing board of adjustment decisions. That in Anderson and Wieldon, there had been discussion of trial de novo on the issues in front of a board of adjustment, and Bontrager said you shouldn't do that. What Bontrager really gets down to and it distills to is the idea that these are mixed questions of law and fact, and that's why-
But your brief says, "Review here is de novo on questions of law and for substantial evidence on questions of fact." I didn't see the discussion of mixed questions of law and fact.
Sure.
Did I miss it?
No, well, no, you didn't miss it, because I've been thinking about it since I wrote it.
So this is a new argument here, too?
I would say it's a discussion of Bontrager, yes.
Well, did you indicate that we should consider this a mixed question of law and fact in your brief? The answer, I think, is no.
I believe the answer is no. I did include in there, though, that the-
But the, but the general issue is before us, and we ought not ignore case law or ordinance definitions that are germane.
No, I provided you both standards of review, both the substantial evidence and the de novo.
That.
Right. So, because the question is, is really, which one of this, does this fit into? Because that's why I couldn't give you a definitive answer before. And the question is, is this, because really what Bontrager says, in my opinion, is, is that if you're really talking about the merits of the decision, then you're really talking about a substantial evidence review.
Is this, is it true that the interpretation of the statutes preserved?
I would think that, yes. I would say that on the theory that was presented to the board of adjustment, it is. It's that the interpretation of the statute, as it is applied to these facts, is before this court.
If the interpretation of the statute is preserved, as a court, how can we let a argument, a legal argument, as to how the statute to be interpreted, get in the way of interpreting the statute, even though it may not have been specifically made, but it's our duty to interpret the statute once it is issued? We, we may have to go outside of what the party said, because both may be wrong. And we've done that in the past, where we've interpreted statutes. I mean, I remember Justice Ternish used to say, "We can't let the argument of the party get away of, get in the way of interpreting a statute correctly." I mean, how do you answer that?
My answer to that would be this, is that in the context of mixed questions of law and fact, as, which I think this is, is the, really, the question is, is whether or not there is a reason, one of, the interpretation given by the board of adjustment is one of a reasonable interpretations. Because I don't deny that you could interpret the statute in the way the board of, or adjustment did. I don't deny that you could interpret the statute in the way that Ms. Hewlett asks you to interpret it. And I don't deny that you could interpret it the way that the Court of Appeals did. I think those are-
But shouldn't, or should we construe the statute strictly against the city and in favor of the property owner? In which case, if it's ambiguous, you can go either way, property owner wins.
It's, it's an interesting question, because when I look at that body of law, what I'm really considering, what I think it really deals with is not nonconforming uses that have been grandfathered in. What you're really talking about is, is that you should make it clear that this is a single-family resident zone, and that this is what you're buying into when you get into it. But when you buy a grandfathered-in, nonconforming use, and you're in the gray area, you bought in knowing that you're in the gray area, that this statute lets you know that if you want to change your property, and it's going to increase the intensity of that use, in the opinion of the board of adjustment, that you are subject to the discretion of the board of adjustment in that circumstance.
But the policy of the state is the free use of property. I mean, that's the general policy of the state. It's broader than a rule of interpretation. It's the free use of property.
I believe that is the policy of the state. But in the context of an existing nonconforming use, that policy is met in a circumstance where you can maintain the nonconforming use. That's the purpose of having a grandfathering circumstance.
Let me, I'm running out of time, but let me ask you, nobody's really talked about the Court of Appeals interpretation of the ordinances. You know, they kind of borrowed from this other ordinance about reconstructing after there was damage. Can you comment on that, please?
What I'd say about that is, is sort of what I have said before, is that in these circumstances, with a unique circumstance that is a board of adjustment, there are different reasonable interpretations of the words "increase in intensity" depending on the context. And I could see the Court of Appeals saying, "Oh, well, intensity has only been used in other contexts to describe the number of units, and number of units is the only standard." But what I would tell you is, is that the board of adjustment, and every board of adjustment that I represent, deals with the actual number of occupants, not the theoretical or maximum number of occupants. And that's what leads me to say that I think this is a mixed question of law and fact, because you have to, this is not a circumstance where you have a jury that is considering something that happened in the past. This is a circumstance where you have a group of individuals trying to figure out what's going to happen in the future. And in that circumstance, they're entitled to look at common sense inferences and say, "What does increase intensity mean in this context?" And I don't think that that's so ambiguous that it has to be struck down, or that it affects people's free use of property. It simply says, "You got to be nice to your neighbor, and we've elected these people or appointed these people to make that decision." And those people, not the Court of Appeals, are the people who should make that interpretation. The Court of Appeals may have a different opinion, which is reasonable, but it cannot substitute its opinion for that of the local board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Updike. The appeal in Ames 2304 LLC versus City of Ames is now considered, submitted. We'll now hear the argument in Hawkins versus Grinnell Regional Medical Center.